Prayer, and then we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Let us pray. Father Lord, we come tonight just thanking you for the blessed privilege to come out to conduct business of this county. We thank you, Lord, for blessing us through this day. We thank you for all the blessings you bestow upon us. We thank you for our nation, Lord, our state, and our county. We ask, Lord, that you be with us tonight. Bless us, Lord, that we'll make good decisions for the county and the citizens of this county, and it will be acceptable in our society. We thank you, Lord, for all that you do. Blessed now, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for our people.
Okay, no problem. It's just a phone. Okay, we'd like to welcome everybody here tonight. When we get started, first our agenda will be, we've called order, and with approval of the agenda, we've got some changes in the agenda, gentlemen. First, on the department reports, Renee McGinnis has some information on the teacher at Sunbury School. That will be a Section C on the department reports. Under the old business, it'll be a B. Our county manager, Toby Chapel, has a contract with LS 3P and a budget amendment for the library. Under Section 4, the new business, B, and there'll be a number 2, instead of 1 and a 2, we've got surplus vehicle will be 1, and the female resolution will be 2. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to see us have a second citizen's comments after new business, if so desired.
Gentlemen, any problem with that?
Fine, yeah.
Okay, well, we will be adding a second citizen's comment after the new business. Is that right, or after the old business?
New business.
Okay. Okay. All right, if any other questions, we'll entertain a motion to accept the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. All right. Next, first on my agenda, we're gonna have the first citizen's comments. We've had a few here, but if you would like to wait until after the later comment, it'll be fine. Just let me know, and we'll put your name, go through the second citizen's comments after the new business. Mickey Lee, you're first on the agenda.
I'm not sure how to operate this piece of equipment here. I appreciate it, commissioners, county manager, Madam Secretary, ladies and gentlemen.
Pull it down, Mickey. There you go.
I just wanted to stop in here, and there's been a lot of conversation about the library, and I wanted to stop in and tell an experience I had in my life with the library. I lived in some foster homes as a child coming along, and I had the good fortune of spending one year with one of my schoolteachers, who I'm still very close to to this day. To me, she was an older woman with an older husband, and now I look back on it, he was 23 and she was 21.
That makes you a really old person.
Fresh out of college. Well, I was in the fifth grade, so... But she knew a little bit about where I came from, and being my teacher, she knew what I was struggling with in school, which was basically everything. So the summer that I lived with her, she took me to the library, and I had trouble reading. And she took me to the library two to three times a week, every week, for about an hour, and it made a big difference in my life in school. Now, that doesn't mean I used everything that I learned there, but I learned how to read. And before you can learn in school, you must know how to read. And it helped my spelling, and from that point on, shortly after that, two years later, I went to Oxford Orphanage and was the best speller in my class the three years I was there. And I know that all had to do with her taking the time to take me to the library. I'm not here to talk about the cost of the library, I'm just here to say that the library made a difference in my life, and today I'm very appreciative of it. Back then, I didn't look back on it like that. I wanted to go do something exciting, but she held my feet to the fire and made me go. And today, I'm very appreciative of that, and I love her very much. And as I said, I know there's a lot of controversy about the library. I don't hear anybody saying anything about the 55 million-plus dollars they're gonna spend on widening 11 and 13 for a seven-mile stretch. That bothers me as much as anything, because I don't think that that is money well spent where we are today statewide. I think that's money that, if you want to wait on something, wait on that. But I appreciate your time, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mickey. All right, next on the list is Lawrence Minks, read by Tiffany. Oh, there we go. Tiffany Clements, right? Welcome, Tiffany Clements.
Okay. I'm reading this for him, Lawrence Minks. He's a Gates County resident.
Excuse me, can you tell where you're from? What town are you from?
I live in Gates.
Gates.
Mm-hmm, born and raised here. Again, this is Lawrence Minks. He's in the United States Navy, and he's a Gates County resident. So I'm reading this letter for him, and also thank you all for letting me read it to commissioners and to Gates County citizens. To Gates County, my name is electrical maid, first petty officer Lawrence Minks. Oh, can't hear him. Oh? Okay, is that better? Okay, thank you. To Gates County, my name is electrician maid, first petty officer Lawrence Minks. I am currently serving in Iraq. Some of you might know who I am. I have coached baseball and soccer at the community center. I have been serving our great country for 12 years. I am very upset with our country and the Gates County government. We put our lives on the line every day so that you can get up in the morning, go to work, and come home to your family each day. Another thing you don't have to ever worry about is being forced to learn another culture, because we will let that happen. We will never let that happen, excuse me. I am upset with our country and our county because you are spending money on things that don't need to be spent on in cutting funds for education and our military when those are the future of this country. Instead of spending 1.5 million dollars on a new library, let's move into an empty building that's not falling apart. Instead of spending money for a new building, how about using the empty Family Foods building in Gatesville? Let's use our heads and work together to do the right thing for our county. It's time for us to bring outside revenue in and tax them instead of trying to take all the money from our citizens. If you are going to install a sewer line just for one contractor and a few citizens to use, then charge them. Do not raise our taxes for it or our water bills. Let's bring in industry, a Walmart, Lowe's, BJ's, and other stores. Let's start using our resources and look out for each other. Let's create jobs for the people in the county, which in turn will create revenue. Let's get out of that old country-time mindset and start thinking about the outside box. Let's take pride in our county and fix up the old buildings and schools first. I want to live in this county until I die, but I can't do this if we can't take care of our county first. Let's not try and build new public buildings, let's fix the old ones. One last thing about the library that is hardly ever used, let's come up with a way to have a public access to the libraries in our schools after hours. This will eliminate a staff library that is hardly used, and you can distribute the money budgeted for that library to the school library fund and get use out of them. You can create after-school programs and won't have to pay to fund a separate building. This is just one example of thinking outside the box. I'm going to sum it all up with this. I'm going to wake up every morning and be proud to serve my country and Gates County. I challenge the commissioners of Gates County to wake up every morning and be proud that they have a chance to serve the citizens. I challenge you to think outside the box and do what's right for the citizens of Gates County, and not what's right for your benefit. Thank you for serving as our county commissioners. Thank you for your time and allowing my letter to be read during your commissioner meeting. Lawrence Minks, United States Navy, Gates County.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, Robert Winslow.
First of all, I'd like to thank you all for voting to move forward with the bidding process for the new library.
Could you repeat your name again, please?
Robert Winslow, Sunbury. I noticed some discussion about... I noticed some discussion about waiting until we decided what size and what features libraries should have before we move forward, but it seems like to me, if we waited for everybody to agree, I might have been too old to use the library. I realize during these economically challenging times, you all have to spend the money where it is needed. I don't think anybody can debate the fact that we need a new library, except perhaps the citizens that don't use the ones we have, the one we have. I don't know what features it needs to have, how much it needs to cost, where it needs to be, or what size it needs to be. Mr. Chapel states that the cost can be reduced through the competitive bidding process, either reducing the size or the features. I just hope these cuts won't be so severe that we will end up with a facility we're not sufficient for our needs. It just doesn't make a lick of sense to me to try to save money now and have to spend it later. I simply think the citizens of Gates County deserve a library we can be proud of, one that provides better working conditions for the dedicated staff without bats and flooding and set of problems, and a more pleasant, less crowded atmosphere for the patrons. I know that in this generation of online services, I pass nooks and candles, some people believe the library is no longer relevant, they are heading off into the sunset. I'm not going to change anybody's mind about that point. I might be old-fashioned, or heck, I am old-fashioned, but I just can't comprehend how reading the screen can be as satisfying as actually turning a page on a book, and when you are finished closing a book with an emphatic thump and thinking back on how much you enjoyed it and how much you enjoyed meeting the characters you met. If you have a problem at the library, you can simply ask somebody. I've always found the staff to be dedicated, eager to help, and very knowledgeable. There's Auckland Index last week concerned the demographics of library usage. I'm not sure where the numbers came from, and to tell you the truth, I didn't understand all of them. It almost seemed like we were trying to compare apples and oranges. I've always been told you can make numbers say whatever you want to make them say. Seems to me the best way to check library usage is to use the library. I know whenever I go, it seems pretty busy. Here's some numbers for you. I'm 55 years old, I live in Sunbury. I've been going to the library since it was in the Gits building. My daughter's 15, I've been taking her for at least 15 years, and she loves it. We used to go about once a week, usually on Wednesday nights or Saturday mornings. We checked out books, movies, and CDs, used the computers, and read the magazines. I helped during the move to the current building, and hope and pray I will be granted opportunity to help them move again to the new location, wherever and whatever it may be. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Okay, Mr. J.
I'm sorry, if you tell a rest, I might break the second.
Okay, that's not a problem. Earl?
Hello. Hello, I'm Earl Roundtree, Folly Road, Sunbury. I left tonight, my wife got a laugh out of me when I told her, now that we were being videoed by two cameras, that I was gonna have to hire me a makeup artist before I came to the commissioner meeting. She didn't think it would help, but thought it was funny to see me made up. I guess that, you know, as far as I know is concerned, I wanted to elaborate on what Robert said, I had no idea what he was gonna say, but I did have a conversation with someone today talking about the cost. And it's hard to really put a figure on that cost, I guess, until we get into it to some extent. But one thing that I do know for a fact, and Robert probably can know a little bit about this, even with state contracts and highways, if we start cutting costs, we start cutting quality. And we, for example, we can pave that driveway, I mean, that parking lot, and if it's done properly, with enough crush and run and pack properly, with just cars going in and out of it, it will last Robert probably his lifetime. My driveway in my house is about 30 years old, and I've had tractors and trucks going in and out of it, but it was done properly. And when I got it done, I didn't go get the cheapest bid, I went to someone that I knew that would do it right. And I guess that's one thing. When I was up here at the Wednesday meeting, I had been led to believe, or thought in my own mind, that we were looking at maybe 1,100,000, with a maybe 1,200,000. The figure came in a little bit higher. But as my understanding, none of this is in concrete. We do need to be looking at what we need, but we want to build a quality building, Graham. We don't want to have walls leaking like in this courthouse, and we don't want roofs that keep breaking down on us. We need to have a quality building, and I think that's what Robert was talking about. But this library has been discussed, re-discussed, I spent a lot of time thinking about it, and I think in the words of the prophet Isaiah, Henry, first chapter, verse 18, "Come together and let us reason together." And I don't see any reason for us to spend a great deal of time fighting over something. Let's compromise, let's do what is right, and let's go on with it. I don't... We need a library. Everyone, all five of you, I got the minutes, all five of you have said that. That's no problem, it's been said over and over, so it's time to get over with that. The next question is, is how big do we need one? Now, I'm on record, as y'all know, and said that we don't need a library any bigger than we need, if that makes any sense. The library is not a growth institution. In your Virginian pilot, if you read it online or by it, another thing, they've cut the size of the Virginian pilot again. This is the second time. The News and Reserve was beginning to look like a tabloid. Newspapers are gone. My grandkid today, seven years old, was doing something to the TV, and I looked at him, and I said, "Victor, what did you just do to that TV to make it do that?" And he said, "Well, don't you know how to do that, granddaddy?" And I said, "I don't." He said, "Old people just don't know nothing about electronics and stuff." So I would like to see the library. I think we can build a library for 1, 2, and that was only a cap that Kenny's motion was, and I think we can do it. And I will want to say, though, that I... Get my voice right here. I did have a phone call from a man, Mr. John Willie, and Mr. John Willie would like to me to say a few words. So I'd like to invite Mr. John Willie up here to the microphone. Earl, this is John Willie. I've been studying on this library, I've been thinking about it, and I think we need to look at this thing real close. But by the way, how you been getting along? I said, "Well, John, I'm having a lot of trouble with my feet, and I can't walk." Well, Earl, I tell you what would help you, if you would lose some weight. I said, "Well, Mr. Willie," I said, "I'm real proud of myself." I said, "I've lost about 10 pounds in a month." "Well, Earl, I'm not talking about you losing 10 pounds, you need to lose 50 pounds." So always take it from somebody like Mr. Willie to tell you the truth, and he did call me, and this was all the truth. Thank you.
Thank you, Earl. Okay, that's the end of the public comment for the first session. Next, we'll have department reports. Patrice?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi. I want to present the Rural Operating Assistance Program for the upcoming fiscal year, 2011, 2012. And as I'm sure you're aware, this year, the program suffered a 25% cost cut across the state, and for us, that meant that we lost $26,491. We are proposing to get $98,814 to provide the three programs that we usually provide, the Elderly and Disabled Transportation Assistance Program, the Employment Transportation Assistance Program, and the Rural General Public Program. We are proposing to provide the same services pretty much that we provided every year thus far, with a few minimal cuts to help to make sure that we can follow through with the promises that we made to the state to provide the services the total fiscal year and the promise that we made to the county government not to cost them anything. The only change from last year's program is that this year, with the employment transportation dollars, we are proposing to use those dollars to provide transportation to childcare facilities. The other thing is that each year this time, we usually decide on what our annual plan will look like. That means where we go and when we go. It is pretty much the same as it has been every year. The only cuts are that usually in Greenville, we'll go all day, we want to cut that to Greenville will only go in the mornings. The other cut is that we were providing transportation to the Tyner Community Care Center on Tuesdays and Thursdays. We're proposing to cut Tuesdays out and just go on Thursdays. And the last thing is that where we usually have a fair is each way. On trips that we usually don't go all the time, like Greenville, we won't have a one-way cost, we'll only have a total cost both ways, whether you go both ways. It was $8 each way previously, we're proposing that it will just be $16, and you can go and come back. If you don't come back, you still pay the $16. For the Portsmouth and Norfolk trips, it would be the $15 where it was proposed before, in the previous years that we paid $7.50 each way. And for the Hampton VA, where it was $9 each way, it'll just be $18, whether you go one way or both ways. And that's the only changes that we're proposing to make. That's all that I wanted to present. If there are questions, I...
Any questions, gentlemen?
Patrice, on your... Take Greenville, for example.
Mm-hmm.
You had a going fair and a returning fair.
Yes.
When did you collect that fair, when you were doing it that way?
We collected when they go.
Okay. You collected the full fair going, you didn't wait until you got back?
Some people pay when they get on, some people pay when they get off.
Okay. I was just... Reason I was asking about that is now you'll be collecting the fair, the full fair, the $16, on the beginning of the trip, is that right?
On the beginning of the trip, yes, sir.
Okay.
So you were going all day?
We were going anytime.
Oh, anytime?
Anytime on that Tuesday, but we're proposing to just change that and go Tuesday morning.
Tuesday morning?
Mm-hmm.
One trip, how long does that last? I mean, how long do you stay, is that...
Depends on how long your appointment is, or whatever. And previously, we've had people to go early in the morning, and some of them, you know, most of the time, we're back by 2 o'clock. But there are some people that'll make appointments, and we won't get back by the time that we say that we'll be parked, like 7 o'clock, because usually, sometimes with specialist appointments, they'll go to the hospital and have whatever, blood drawn or whatever, and then they'll go, and they have appointments. And so if they make their appointments in the morning, then we'll know we're back by the time that's our cutoff time.
Okay. You need approval on this tonight?
Yes, and we have to open a public hearing.
Okay. We will be... We need a motion to have, open a public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, open public hearing on the Rural Operating Assistance Program. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. All right, we're in public hearing. Is there any comments from the citizens on this Rural Operating Assistance Program, or any questions? One at the back. Ms. Parker, would you stand up and come up here to the front? You need to come to the podium so we can hear you. Just... We're trying to get this right. Identify yourself and tell where you live at, if you don't mind. I know who you are and...
I'm Mrs. Parker, and been here on Zion Roads, Sunbury, North Carolina. I'm just curious, what are you talking about? Because we just moved here.
We have a community transportation system program, provide transportation to any Gates County resident, provide transportation...
Patrice.
Patrice. Let's get this on.
We provide transportation to different places. We go to Ahoski every day, we go at 8, 10:30. The first return trip is at 12, we go back over at 2, and our final pickup is at 4. We go to Elizabeth City every day, the same times. We go to Suffolk, we go at 6:00 in the morning, at 10:30, return time is at 12, we go back over at 2, and our final pickup is at 5. We go to Edaton on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, 6:30, 10:30, and our pickup time is at 12. We go to Greenville on Tuesdays. We go, let's see, we go to Portsmouth on 2nd and 4th Wednesdays, from 10 to 1. We go to Hampton VA on 1st, well, what did I say, 1st and 3rd Wednesdays. And we go to Norfolk Monday, Tuesday, and Thursdays from 10 to 1.
So y'all have brochures and stuff. How do you put this information out for people who just moved here and...
It's actually on the county website, and we actually, if you'd like, we can mail you a copy of the program plan, or you can come by our office and we have them.
And this is GITS?
This is GITS, yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Very interesting, just curious. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. Are there any more comments?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple more questions for Patrice, myself.
Okay, you want to wait until after your public hearing?
Be glad to.
All right, if there are no more comments, we'll need a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Motion and second, go out of public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. All right, we're now out of public hearing. You have some questions, Commissioner Oates?
Patrice, the begin date for these changes, what date is that?
It will be October 1.
October 1, and you're gonna notify, if we pass this tonight, you'll get a notification out, maybe something on the website, or...
Yes, it'll change on the website, the actual plan.
Okay. And then another question, do you know how many dialysis patients are using GITS?
I think we have, like, 10 now.
10.
Right now, we have dialysis patients in Suffolk, and Ahoski, and in Edaton.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any more questions? If not, we need a motion to accept the Rural Operating Assistance Program as presented by Ms. Patrice.
So moved.
All right, we got a motion, and do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Okay, Patrice.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next on our agenda, Ms. Reba Green-Holly with the Extension Department.
So moved.
All right, we got a motion and do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Okay, Patrice.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next on our agenda, uh, Ms. Reba Green-Holly with the Extension Department.
Good evening, Reba.
Good evening. It is with great pleasure I bring to you all the accomplishment of our Reed's Grove Elementary School, uh, status as a national historic site. As I've reported before, we've been working on getting the Reed's Grove School, which is currently the EIC building on the National Historic Register. And we submitted a proposal to have that happen. And as of August, we have now received our official certificate that the Reed's Grove School is now an official national treasure here in Gates County. And I'll read, uh, from Jeffrey Crowe, who is our State Historic Preservation Officer. He's pleased to inform us that the above referenced property, Reed's Grove School, Gatesville vicinity, Gates County, has been entered into the National Register of its historic places. You have an official certificate enclosed, also information and a copy of the official nomination form. Your county is most fortunate to own and preserve a property that justly deserves this honor. The National Register has been called a roll call of the tangible reminders of the history of the United States. It is therefore a pleasure for the Office of Archives and History to participate in this program and thereby make our nation aware of North Carolina's rich cultural heritage. In order that we may keep our records up to date, it would be very helpful if you would notify us of any changes in ownership or any major alteration of the property, including moving, destruction, remodeling, or restoration. We appreciate your cooperation in preserving the best of our past for prosperity. And the plans are to get a sign, uh, do some fundraising to get a sign, and to have a homecoming ceremony of those people who graduated in the spring. Um, and to have some of the archive information that's been found through this research to be posted in, in that building. And as I read through the, um, the official, um, application that the historian put together for us, it was quite interesting to find out that there was major controversy on the amount of funds that needed to be spent originally to build this building. And the argument was originally two thousand dollars and then it was twenty-five hundred and there was major discussion back and forth about paying for this educational building. So we now have another national treasure in Gates County.
Thank you, Reba.
Congratulations, Reba.
Appreciate all the hard work that y'all done getting that done. All right, the next on the agenda, Mr. Renee McGinnis.
Good evening.
Good evening.
At your regularly scheduled meeting this month, you had asked that I go out and look at the teachage with Sunbury School to take an interior look at that. And I believe y'all have a copy of the property record cards with your papers. And also on the back of that is a spreadsheet. The current property record card indicates that it had, is of average condition, which I think we all know that's really not the case. To bring it down to a fair condition would bring the value of the house itself down from a hundred ninety-four thousand five eighty-eight to one sixty-four one oh nine. After going in and looking at the interior of the structure, to bring it down to a poor condition would actually bring it down to a hundred three thousand one fifty-one, which I think is mighty low for that structure. The interior, the structure seems to be same. There is some mildew inside. I do not know if there has been anything done at the county level as far as tests and whatnot, as far as the mildew or if there's any lead paint that's also in the building. And I know there's a lot of paint peeling and whatnot, but I think that's just a matter of a water base being put over and oil bases what that is. But I can't really, I'm not real pleased with the one sixty-four one oh nine either, which is actually reflecting a forty-five percent depreciation. But I think the one oh three is a little too much. What I would recommend is overriding that programmed depreciation that's with those condition codes of average, fair, and poor, and go into a fifty-five percent depreciation, which would bring the value of the house itself to one thirty-seven one fifty-five. The total value, which includes the lot, would be one seventy seventy-five.
One seventy seventy-five?
One hundred seventy thousand seventy-five dollars. That's the total.
Okay.
That would be the total value of the property. I just felt like one, to bring it down to a poor condition of one oh three one fifty-one was just a little on the low side.
That's your recommendation?
So my recommendation would be to go with the fifty-five percent.
Any comments from the commissioners?
Now, we have this system set up, um, average, fair, poor, based on any specific procedure or tax regulation.
It's just, it's just basically the, you know, eye viewing of what you feel like the condition of the property is.
Well, what I'm saying also is that, uh, when we put this in place, we've put it in place, it's not governed by the Machinery Act or whatever. In other words, our record cards say if it's poor, this is the percentage. If it's fair, this is percentage. In other words, we can override-
It's just the procedure of value that is in place by the Machinery Act, by the statutes as to how you carry out that procedure of value. There is nothing in the Machinery Act as to spelling things out to the point as to what's average, fair, or poor.
Well, what I'm getting to is I want to make sure that when we use this unorthodox application, that we're within the legality that, what we can do.
Oh, you're, you're in the legality of what you can do, yes.
Well, that's what we ask you to do, is take a look at it and so this is your results. And, uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I would recommend that we adopt this new value for the, uh, parsonage.
You'll make that as a motion?
I'll make that as a motion.
All right. We've got a motion to accept new value for the old parsonage at Sunbury to one seventy, one hundred seventy thousand oh seventy-five dollars. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Thank you, Renee.
We'll get that changed. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, the next on our agenda will be in the old business. Uh, Commissioner Horr has a presentation about the library, some of the figures and numbers that he's been working on. Commissioner Horr? Where is it? Here it is.
I want to turn that on. Turn the, uh, total.
Where is the on button now?
Good evening.
Step top button.
Third.
Good to see all of you out here tonight. This is not basically one hundred percent about the library. To me, there's four things that this is really about. And it really is a sale. S, A, L, E. S is for the size. A is for the amount. And L is for the location. And E is for execution of the process. That's what this actually means to me. You may have a different opinion. And as Earl just said, we in Gates County, put it on slideshow, Henry. View slideshow, slides. And I don't know where it's at on two thousand and seven. Yeah, slideshow, hit that. And view from beginning, I think, probably. But anyhow, sale, size, amount, location, and execution of the process. Try that, try this right here. There we go. All right, next slide, Henry. And I want to say right up front, I appreciate, and these came from the library himself, Mr. Gary Hall, at the Director of Regional Library. So I appreciate him getting those. I had to do a lot of parsing on this. There's a lot of information that could still be done if I had another piece of information, which I think he told me that the attorneys and them were going to meet in October. And hopefully, if there's not a conflict, there will be some other detailed information that would even provide another matrix of numbers of which you can capture some information and learn something about what's going on with the process. So anyhow, where this developed at, and this happened last June or July, when I was not a sitting commissioner, I asked the commissioners to do, when I find out that this little piece of information right here that has a number, that if you go to the library and sign up, you get that card. That controls everything about what, and it, let me say this now. This is about people coming into the library and checking out materials, DVDs, books, whatever. It's not about you walking in, using the computer, or doing anything else. Go look in the dictionary and read the definition of a library and what a library is. And I'm not here to debate, and like I said, we need a library. And everyone, as Earl said up here, are all in agreement that we want to do something. But I want to do the right thing for you, the citizen, the taxpayer, as well as the user. So anyhow, if you go in the library and you check out materials, you get a receipt card here. These are barcoded numbers that represent, is in every piece of info, of documents they have. So it brings in this receipt code to check that you are taking this out and when you should bring it back to the library. So that really starts the process. And that, that's what bothers me. Before I do anything, when people start spitting numbers at me, I start making calculations in my head automatically. And that's what I wanted to do. When I saw this, this told me something. That I have some valuable information that I could gather and tell what was going on. And I have had a hard time convincing a few people to do that. And there again, I appreciate the opportunity that I got. Next slide, Henry. On this right here, Gates County, whoops. Henry, I might need yours. That's not too good.
Too much magnetism.
All right, thank you. All right, right here, this is talking about Gates County resident lot that are registered by town. Population of Gates County by the two thousand and ten census, twelve thousand one ninety-seven. What we proposed all the day, I had a million seven, I changed it to a million five. Right here represents the towns of Gates County residents that have an address in Gates County, North Carolina, by town. And I was quite shocked and surprised at this. Look at Gates. Thirty-five percent of the registered library cardholders live in Gates. How many of you thought that was true? I didn't. So now, if you look at that, the distribution here, thirty-seven point seven one percent of the population live of Gates County, have a card. Now let's look at it east and west here. Seventy percent live in Gates, Gatesville, Ull, and Roduka. Thirty percent on the other side. This is the statistics of this forty-five hundred and ninety-nine people that ought to have a Gates County residence that hold a card. So does this tell you anything? I start thinking about it when I see it. Okay, then if we were to spend a million five, that's just another calculation, how much would be by town and by region of what we would spend. So that's the distribution of the cardholders. So you can look at Gates, Gatesville, and Ull and see the numbers. Okay, next slide. Now what did with that, took the forty-five hundred and ninety-nine, they do it by two, by these categories. Adult, juvenile, outreach, staff, grand total. And this is the distributions of percents by those groups on each individual line, as well as the total component down here. Now what does this tell you? Well, not a whole lot. This number looks at seventy-one percent and thirty percent. Juvenile, somebody will think, well, that's misleading because juveniles, to me, would be under twenty years old. So above twenty, there's a whole lot more people have a, you know, range above twenty years old. So it's not necessarily inaccurate from that standpoint. It appears that the adults are the only ones using that. Well, there are more of them, so that's part of it. Next slide. Now here's it, this is just a pie chart, again, about the first numbers you saw on the screen. Look at the pie, Gates, Gatesville, and Ull. And the matrix of what it makes up with the library, the people that are actually using the library. So again, where would you put a library? Does it make sense to put it in the middle of the county? Maybe. Maybe we might get more people to go. But it had plenty of time to come. Plenty of time. Okay? Now this right here, and some bad addresses in here, but three nineteen, then this is a distribution between adults. But look at some of the towns that are on here. There's one, I believe this is Texas. Here's Little Rock, Arkansas. And I assume this is Milwaukee and North Hampton County, Virginia Beach. So we got a lot of people that have cars that do not have a Gates County address. So they're using that and that's, that's fine. They might be visiting. I don't know. They, they're cardholders. So anyhow, you look at that and you wonder. Okay? Now, this includes that people you just saw, the non-Gates County residents. Four thousand eight hundred and ninety-eight, which Gary gave me. And I, in the last file, there's a few more been added to it since I actually got that. So if I look at this and look at the distribution, here's where the percent of that distribution by year that they registered. There's seven hundred and three that went to the library, got a card, and never checked anything out after that. Seven hundred and three people. Fourteen point three five percent. So you look down the cumulative percent and you come to this line right here. Sixty-eight, uh, eighty-six, I believe it is. So that means there's thirty-one or two percent of the people that hold a card that have only been, have not been there since two thousand and nine. Have not walked in the library and got a book or a DVD or something else. Now, did they go use the computer? I don't know that. And I'm gonna show you something a little bit later about that. The right name, so you think about that name. Only thirty-one percent have used it in two years. Okay? Next slide, Henry. All right, I took the seven hundred and three people and I went back and found the year that they were actually registered. And this is the distribution of those people of when they registered and they never went back. So a hundred and twenty-eight. And you can see this year, there've been twenty-eight people that have done that and have not checked anything out. Twenty-eight people. Okay? So you look at the distribution of that and then the cumulative thing, same type impact. So I took this and I did something else. Next slide. All right, so then I took this, not, well, that's just the dis- distribution between the adults and the juveniles, but it's still the same seven hundred and three. Okay? All right, I took the seven oh three, took the slide previous to that, add it together to the total patrons that had done something, come up with these numbers, redistribution again, and what have I got? Thirty-three percent. Have not, now these, these didn't do anything. They didn't check nothing out, nothing. So thirty-three percent of the people went to the library in two years, have not been in two years there, and that's what they- have not been in two years there, and that's what they had done. Okay? Next slide. All right, out of this, the forty-five ninety-nine, we start going back to active and inactive there, that here, the forty-one ninety-five, that's when you take the seven oh three from the forty-eight ninety-eight. And you come up the total, grand total, and then see another distribution here of what those people are. Just something to look at, but it gets interesting. Next slide. All right. This tells you by day, how many people went on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and you see the distribution. You really can't see a lot there, other than, obviously, there's not as many people there on Saturday as are those other days. So this makes you begin to wonder about peoples that are using the library, the lifestyle, are they retired people? Are they students? Are they eight-to-five guys? Maybe not. So you begin to look at those things on a percent basis. And there's only thirty-nine hundred and fifteen of them that actually have a Gates County address that are active on there. All right, next slide. All right, now this is where it gets a little bit. This is by month, by year, coming across here. This is the gradual, these represents the increases by year. And this is what really gets me really thinking and wondering about a lot of things. You see these numbers as they gradually increase? Look what happened this year. And I'm going to tell you, remember when I told you? I started talking about these numbers around last June. I want you to focus on this, and go right here, and start looking here at this, compare it to the previous, and right here. Now the summertime is the heaviest time. But look from here to here. Do you have any idea what that makes me, as an individual, think? Someone changed the focus. Why? Because John Horr was asking questions. Now is that right, or is that wrong? We want to see this, but that's what happened. It's speculation to a certain extent, but this almost shows me, or puts in the narrative to me, that somebody's saying, hey, you need to do something. Well, that's right, we do. Education is a cornerstone of your success. But it is an individual thing, of how motivated you are, and exercising the resources that are out there. You have to be engaged. To be successful, you have to be engaged. Your parents had to do it, but you, as an individual, had to take personal responsibility. So maybe someone is taking responsibility. Hopefully so. Okay, now what happens is, we start looking at, when is it being used? Well, twenty-three percent of the people that use it for a checking something out, use it in the morning. Seventy-seven percent in the afternoon. And this is the distribution by hours, right here, of how it works. So just look at this, and I look at this activity here, and I had a number, and I think this is about, I can't remember, fifty-six percent or something like that. I had it on written name, but anyhow, so just look at this activity that's happening. People are going in the afternoons. There again, are these working-class people? Are they retirees? What are they? I don't know that. But there's a missing piece of information that will give me those data so that I can determine what that situation is. But I grant you this, they're not your normal working day guy. Probably not, not if he works during the day. I doubt it very seriously. Okay, next slide. All right, this is taking the thirty-nine fifteen number and just doing the distribution again by town, same type thing. It brings out the same scenario. Seventy-one percent of the people are Ewell, Gates, Gatesville, and Roduka. Twenty-nine percent on the other. These are the distribution of those inactive, those people that are inactive from those towns, six sixty-five. All right, now this is just a graphical display again of the people that, their time that they're using, and it's reversed. This is AM and moving back up this way. So you can see there's a lot of heavy activity right here, three, four, four, five. Now, I don't know that school gets out at three o'clock, could be some kids. I don't, I don't know. I really don't have the answer for that, because I don't have the statistical data to really determine what it is. With that one piece of information, with that barcode, whether it has, and it's confidential that your name cannot be attached to that. The barcode is not confidential itself, it's just a number. And unless I can find your card and put that number to who it came from, I can't tell that. That's the debate. But that one piece of information will yield a valuable, valuable thing about repetitious. Okay, next slide. All right, now this is, he sent me for the time period of August 1st, 2009 to August 1st, 2011, the people that were active. This is the breakdown, four staff, thirteen seventy-two, three oh six, six one, sixteen hundred and eighty-nine people, in this two-year period, checked out something from the library, physically checked out something. That averages, two-year average, eight hundred and forty-five. What does that do? That eighty-four represents ten point one two percent of the voters in Gates County. Ten point one two percent of the voters. Seven percent of the population of Gates County by the 2010 census. Eighteen percent of the registered forty-five ninety-nine Gates County residents. Now, look at this. In that two-year period, there was fifty-seven thousand six hundred and seventy-six transactions, averaging twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight. This is the library staff. Obviously, they're all, they're all the time, so they're getting a lot of stuff. The average transactions per, for each one of them, five hundred and sixty-six. Other people, drops down way here. Then if you took this five days a week, fifty-two weeks in a year, and put an average that on an hour basis, this daily basis, that's what you would end up with. So, kind of strange. But anyhow, this is the key number, eight hundred and forty-five and ten point one two. Now this number, if you really look at it, like I said, in the past two years, you could see there'd been a concerted effort to get that number higher. No doubt about it, really has. Well, that's what we need to be doing every day, is promoting our business, every day. Not just when somebody asks questions. All right, same thing. This is forty-five hundred and ninety-nine Gates County residents, the six eighty-nine, averaging eight forty-five a year, same deal here. This is what Gates County pays the Alamo Regional Library System per year. So for every person of, in Gates County that has a card, it costs us twenty dollars. For every person, on the two-year average, it costs a hundred and seven dollars for those that are active, per person. Hundred and seven bucks. By transaction, three dollars and twelve cents per person, per transaction. So if you go, and I'm not sure about this, I don't know whether, and Miss Family Law would have to answer this, is a transaction one book, or is it a group of books?
It could be anywhere from one to twenty.
Okay, so that's a transaction. So if they did twenty books, take three dollars and twelve cents divided into the, to this number, that's what you would get. Same thing again. Twelve thousand one hundred and ninety-seven people, total population, seven percent. Ten point two percent, two-year average, users. And remember, only thirty-one percent of the cardholders have been since 2009. So we start looking at the pie chart here. Let's see who's using it, who's not. Ten point one two percent, two-year average. This is the ninety percent, what are they doing? How do you think they might feel about a library? Obviously, not too good. Probably not. I don't know why. And I will say this, and this, this ninety percent, maybe they need to be engaged. Maybe so. I don't know. But you know what? That is their decision of whether they're engaged or not. They are a voter, so they should have the opportunity to decide what they want, not just here. This is missing the point of the democratic society that we all belong to. We're very much missing the point. Now, there is a need, very much so. We have a situation in Gates County that we need correcting. No question about it. Next slide. All right, when I first got involved, this was the first thing that was thrown at me, there was seventeen thousand people that visited the library. The statistical two-year data says it's eight hundred and forty-five that are using it by traditional means, as defined by the dictionary of what a library is. What are we using it for? Yeah, there's some of this going on, working with, that's a little wrong. But anyhow, we have a school that has lots of computers. Dr. Smallwood said that they were available. We need to use the resources we have. Copier, a gentleman in here that I know that fits this category, he says he goes about twice a month, and so he fits this category. This eight forty-five, seventeen divided by eight forty-five equals the twenty. Twenty visits by eight hundred and forty-five people, on average. And I can't distinguish, all I can tell you is eight hundred and forty-five. But that one thing about it is, I can't really distinguish yet of the class, what really the matrix of these people are, by age. All right, so ninety thousand again, for every, if there were seventeen thousand people that go in, just walk in and whatever, every time they go through the door, it's five dollars and twenty-nine cents ringing up. Might need to hand out a hamburger. I don't know about you, you can go get a McDonald's and get a hamburger, five dollars. Now this, this is where I really, really begin to have a lot of pain. This is our neighboring counties. This is the libraries that they have, and these numbers, I think this one is a dead-on from what Miss Family Law one day went and got the numbers and came back. Forty-one thirty-two at Burt T., five thousand at Hertford Six at North Hampton, and North Hampton has just recently added on to theirs. And we're proposing eighty-one hundred square feet. These are the census populations of those counties. Twenty-one thousand Burt T., twenty-five at Hertford, twenty-two here.
Can I ask you one question? Would that Hertford County consider the fact they've got three libraries in their population?
I don't know.
They've got three libraries in Hertford County, that's what I was going to say.
I, I don't have a clue. All I know is the one Miss Family Law said, the Hertford County, and I assume it's women. All right, square foot per person, nineteen, point nineteen, point twenty, point twenty-seven, and point six six. And that really burns me. I want nice things. Very nice things. I work hard to do that, to try to improve myself. But I'm not trying to keep up with the Joneses. I'm not trying to really surpass them. I'm trying to make a living, provide for my family, and as a taxpayer, that's what I deserve. As a commissioner, I took an oath up here that I would protect each and every one of you. I don't care if you got a hundred dollars or a million dollars. You're all the same to me. Your voice needs to be heard, every last one of them. So, that's okay. This is just a pie chart of the residents. Twelve, just look at the proportion, look at what we are in Gates County. Okay? This is the square footage of the library itself, the eighty-one proposed for Gates, then comparing it to these. Here's the person thing again. Point six six, twenty-seven in North Hampton, and North Hampton just expanded theirs. Something must really be wrong with them.
North Hampton is in the process of doing it right now. They have not expanded yet.
Well, it was just in the paper, Kenny. It was just in the com-
I'm telling you what the commissioners told me.
It was just in the paper. That they have expanded. Matter of fact, they had the grind opening about two and a half, three months ago. Okay, next. This is our Gates County courthouse sitting over here. Lot of opinions about this too, of what should we do. Yep, Sam Armstead. Sam Armstead took this and says, little credit here. But we have a problem over there that we got to do something about, that's serving as our present library. So what are we going to do? Are we going to tear it down? Are we going to renovate it? Or do we just sit around and watch it, sit there? What do we want to do? Next slide. If you go read on the Gates County website, an RFQ, in two thousand, this is about the courthouse. In 2012, Gates County will have a new library in place, and the courthouse will be in need of a new use. What are we going to do with it? How much is it going to cost? Well, that's what here. If you wish your firm to be considered for providing services on this project, please submit eight, and I think that's what we have in the packet right there, of the following information to office by six o'clock PM on Wednesday, August 31. The review committee will include the board of commissioners and the county manager, who will evaluate the information submitted by interested architectural engineering firms, and the selection should be made in September of 2011. So we're going to do something. How much is it going to cost? It's going to cost you, the taxpayer. We're going to make the decision. I'm not necessarily sure that's the right one. There again, you, the taxpayer, need to be engaged. It's your money. Now, let's talk about some things, and a letter was written here, and these are things that some of the citizens in, in Ewell especially, have said to me and around the county. There are things around the county that are not being used. This is one of them, here in Gatesville. So could we do something like this? And I don't know. Buy or lease this building, renovate it to move the library in for a short period of time, restore the courthouse, and I'm talking about restoring it nice now. Something to put in that that you would be proud of as a citizen of Gates County. Think about the money. Move the library, and then we can do, restore the courthouse, move the library back to the courthouse, maybe. And what can you do then? Well, you're getting the same thing. You terminate the lease if you leased it, or you sell the building. Is this viable? Maybe so. We've got to come off our high horses a little bit and, and take an objective approach, if that's what we do. It just depends. Next slide. Here's the Gates County prison. This has been mentioned to me several times. Got a metal roof on it. I don't have it bent on the inside, don't know that, but I do know this. For half a million dollars, you can do a lot with a building like that. We can probably get this free from the state. Hey, they gave us a sewage thing that we engaged in. Do you think the state wants to let it sit there? I don't know. Have we asked? No. Is it a possibility? Maybe. Same thing, renovate the building, move the library, restore the courthouse, move the library back if we want to. Or we keep it as a library, or we utilize it for something else down the road. Is this a viable possibility? Could be. Don't know. Okay? Now- Now, any of you familiar with this right here? And this is another heartburn. Duplicate of Doris and Rogers. This is about five thousand, a little bit more, I believe Doris told me, five thousand square feet. It's a commercial building built by local contractors. Around five thousand square feet. You can build it for half the quote of the hun... This is what we're paying. This is what they started out with. A hundred and ninety-seven dollars a square foot. This really sent off red flags. And I asked the lady that first night, she said a hundred and fifty to two hundred. Well, that's pretty close to two hundred. You had eighty thousand square feet for eighty-five to a hundred, eight hundred thousand dollars tops. Leaves you a hundred grand to do the parking, landscape, and sewer if you don't have it where we're talking about. So add this up, nine hundred thousand dollars. And we got our eight thousand square foot library. Not one point five million. Gotta think out of the box. Okay? Now, let's talk about this. Kim Olds. Is Kim Olds serious about donating land for a library as a token for Gates County's support of the sewer project for his development? And that's what it's about, ladies and gentlemen. Trade the land at the co... Which it hadn't been deeded by, by the way. Trade land at Commerce Park for land near or in Gatesville. Build near the county seat or in the county seat. And majority of library uses. Remember where they come from. Your, Gatesville, and Gates. Install a private sewer for twenty grand. Is this possible? Yes, it is. Eighty thousand to a hundred for a parking lot. And I have talked to one individual in Gatesville that is interested and would do a title swap of land. So let's think about this, hundred and ninety-seven dollars. How many travel hours? How many housing hours will end up bid? Anybody care over it? Speculate? Quite a few. Okay? This is a letter from the town of Gatesville. And it says, Dear Mr. Chaplin, April the fourteenth. At the regular monthly meeting of the Gatesville Town Council, it was brought to our attention that statements have been made that we are not in favor of maintaining the library within the town limits of Gatesville. We would like to go on record stating that nothing could be further from the truth. The library has been located in the town of Gatesville as long as we can remember. We are the county seat and location for the majority of the county office. There are many citizens within the town who regularly use the library. Children ride bicycles and walk to the library. Classes from Gatesville Elementary School walk to the library. Locating the library at the proposed site near Eastern Cross Road across the road from Gates County High School would be an inconvenient location where many of the town's citizens and other county students, other than those from the high school, would have to drive a distance in order to use it. We feel that this would cause a decrease in the number of people using the library. I do, too. For the above reasons, we feel that the county commissioners should seriously consider maintaining the location of the Gates County Library in on year-to-year limits of the town of Gatesville. Sincerely, Elton Winslow, Mayor. Okay? Now, I want you to pay real good attention to this one. This is not free. It impacts your tax rate. You should have a six or seven cent reduction when the school debt is retired. The county currently pays five hundred and sixty-three thousand per year for the school debt service, which will be paid off in July two thousand and thirteen. Five hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars represents about six or seven cents on your tax rate. Here's the plan. We keep the tax rate the same, and you keep going to six seventeen, which I'm in agreement with this. If we're gonna do it, let's pay for it quickly. But it is you, the taxpayer, who needs to decide. It's your money. It's not mine. It's not theirs. So do we do this? And these are more, some other things. This is based on the one point five million dollars, now. So what do you want? Do you want your six or seven or... Six or seven cent return when the debt's paid off? Or do you wanna continue it? I think that's your choice. Next. All right. Now, let's go build a new library. What can we get for eighty-five to a hundred dollars a square foot? The next building was built in this price range. The building is around fifty-eight hundred square feet. You can build it for half the quote of the hundred and ninety-seven that LSP is doing that. And you got a moment. We've already spent, I know, about forty thousand. And the lady was looking some more the other day. We've committed seventy thousand. Think about seventy thousand dollars will buy you in a square foot basis if you're around a hundred dollars. That's seven hundred square feet that we... Because we didn't do our homework up front. You get eight thousand square feet for this price. Again, eight hundred thousand tops. Hundred thousand dollars left that we can do this. Nine hundred thousand dollars. In August fifteenth, if you were at the meeting, I made a motion to build a library at nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Nobody wanted to take on it. Other specs. This building has a large main area, has two large restrooms, has a large kitchen, has several large classrooms. Okay? And here it is. Any of y'all familiar with this? I went to the dedication when they had this. New Hope Missionary Baptist Church, from here to right here. It's brick, too, by the way. This building that we were proposed is hardy wood. They want another fifty-five thousand dollars to brick it. Okay? This one is already bricked. And built in that eighty-five to a hundred. Matter of fact, the hundred has the standard deviation in it, so it's around ninety-three. Okay? Here's the kitchen. Okay? Here's the hall. This is the pool, dining screen, open area, which you can look at it. Here's another shot. Okay? Now, let's talk about that. Brick a building rather than hardy wood. Well, I started there again. Start calculating numbers in my head. Here's the deal. A hundred-foot building by eighty-one will give you eighty-one hundred square feet. Well, let's find out the total linear footage. Hundred, hundred, eighty-one, eighty-one, three hundred and sixty-two feet. If it's twelve-foot-high brick walls, we take this. It's four thousand three hundred and forty-four square feet that needs to be bricked. There are seven bricks in a square foot. So you take this, it's... We'll take thirty thousand four hundred and eighty bricks to brick it. This, I talked to a local contractor, Mike Long, just two weeks ago, what brick cost was. This is what it is. So now you take eleven hundred dollars of a thousand. Costs thirty-three thousand four forty-eight. They want fifty-five thousand. Twenty-one thousand and a half to save. Does this make sense to you? Would you spend your money that way? I would not. Okay? Now, this gentleman that built this building, he's built several things in the county. The preliminary budget numbers, this is my email to me this morning. I talked to him last week, and he emailed me this. Mr. Horr, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you on your county's upcoming building project. As you know, we are a design-build-construction company that has completed three commercial projects in the previous four years in Gates County. We would be happy to provide references from each if requested. Per our phone conversation, you were inquiring about a budget number comparable to the newly completed fellowship classroom addition to the New Hope Missionary Baptist Church building. That project completed includes the design and site work, ended up being between ninety to ninety-five dollars a square foot. Turnkey. This included a septum upgrade. Okay? It included their sidewalks also. As you know, not all buildings are alike, and many variables can come into play from project to project. I would be comfortable telling you a building comparable to New Hope would be around the eighty-five to ninety-five per square foot price. This building would include concrete slab floor, same thing, stick frame with roof trusses, brick exterior, thirty-year dimensional architectural sink, handicap accessible, commercial-grade doors and hardware, floors and walls, PM and E, landscaping and sidewalks. The main variables that can affect your budget the most at this time are engineering, site work, grading, stormwater, parking utilities, and all the governmental requirements. These items would need to be budgeted separately and could be minimal or costly depending on the lay of the land and accessibility of utilities. I am available to you or anyone from your county with any other questions. I wish Gates County all the best with this project and look forward to the possibility of working with you in the future. Have a great day. Thank you. Dennis Geiser, Geiser Construction. Now, Earl, was this the guy that built ABC Board building?
I don't know.
Okay. I'm going on this, and I didn't ask him this because I got the email. Okay, next slide. Now, latest, let's talk about the comment that was made. The futures of libraries, twenty years, all information digitally archived. University of North Carolina asked me a year ago to donate to their library because that's what they were doing. Duke University just was in the paper this past month. It's making that same move. Students will not be going to the library digitally, and they're doing that now, using them from their dorms. Although the process has already begun with groups like Google and Project Gutenberg, digital information will become the medium of choice for future generations. The idea of going to a place like a records department to access books of information will be preposterous to a society that will essentially live online. The effect this will have on libraries will be immediate as its libraries become more sparsely populated with only those patrons who need our services because they do not understand how to navigate the information super-duper highway that will be created. Apple tablet. Kindle, the Apple iPhone. Any of you see the young kids today running around with these things? They're expensive a little bit right now. When I was going to college and taking my tax class, I bought a four-digit calculator. Add, divide, subtract, multiply, wouldn't do square root. I paid eighty dollars for it to help me with my tax class. Today, you know what they are? They are dollar. A four-function calculator, now, not scientific, but a four-function calculator. That's what they are. They're dollar. And people give them away. This is what's gonna happen. So I ask you, what circle group do you want your representative looking out for? Ten point one-two percent of the voters or a hundred percent of the voters or taxpayers? I'm out here on the outside circle, looking at the ten dollars and the million. And as I said, I took a responsibility and an oath when I placed my hand on the Bible that I would protect each and every one of you, regardless of whether you had a hundred dollars or a million. And I campaigned that way. And anybody that met me, I'm doing exactly what I said I was gonna do. It's time to take responsibility and accountability. So you can agree, disagree, but this is what it about. Where do you put your focus? I made the motion to let the citizens of Gates County decide what they want. I think that's right. Now, where do we go from here? I think... And everyone up here agrees, and I mean sincerely, that we need to do something, and we wanna do something. But there's a right way and a wrong way. And protecting someone else's money is paramount to any of my desires or anyone else's. We got three things going on. Library, courthouse. The project I had is... That is really gonna increase cost. That has to come from somewhere. So what do you wanna do with your tax money? How do you want it spent? That choice is up to you. Okay, Henry? Again, I'm gonna close by saying thanks to Gary. I'm gonna be getting some more information as I try to find out what's going on for my own personal benefit. This is a difficult process. It's a sensitive process to all of us. All of us have our passion. Our children are important. Education is important. But you, as a parent, must take the lead. If you do not, you don't get anywhere. You have to have motivation. You can have all the books, all the resources. You can see it today at the education, what's happened. There's more money being spent on education than today than ever. And we're in trouble to where we are. It's about parenting and motivation. And that's your responsibility, that you, as an individual, have to mentor to your children for them to be successful. They have to be pushed. Thank you. I do wanna show one more thing. Hold on, one more thing. Henry, go to that, go to that file and show the pics. This is real... I want you to see this before we...
Where is it?
Uh, just go to that, to the folder. Go to explore and go to the folder. This'll be real quick here. If you can get to the thumb drive, just we hit right-click, hit explore, go to explore. Yeah, right there. All right. Come down and find the thumb drive. Yeah, bring it down here. Keep going till you see the travel drive. All right, click on the travel drive in E right there. There you go. Click on that. Click on the pics. Uh, should, uh... Might double-click it right here on that plus bar right there. Right here, where the arrow is. Click down. All right, now hit that fix right there. That double-click down. All right. And double-click on that. Just double-click on one, I think it'll do it. All right. Now you should hit this plus button, I believe. Where's the one to forward? It should be one to show forward. There you go. Hit that. All right, these are some of the pictures I had my wife to take. Just go through them. There again, another picture of the pit... Oh, shit, hold on. Some of those... This is going into the bathrooms here. Up the front, there's one, and there's two the other way. Another hall going up. That's looking back into the big hall. Two bathrooms here, plus the... This is one of the classrooms. This is another hall section. Another classroom. This is their bathroom, fire room. The hall looking back out to the back door. Side view. This is front again. Uh, front again. Side. Another side. And this is the back door, back entrance of that hall you just saw coming out there. Okay? Shooting to the back door, back to the front. And here's three train units that are keeping cool on this building. Now, this, most of y'all are familiar with this. This is up around the summer. You know what this used to be? What did it used to be? Used to be a tire company. What it would look like today. Next page. Same thing. So old things can be made to be nice and look good. But you gotta have revision. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
All right, we're going to take a quick recess. All right, please, we're going to get started now. All right, next on our agenda, we're going to, we've got on our old business. So our county manager's got a contract for a library that we need to talk about.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. At the last meeting, I was asked by the board to bring back the contract for LS3P and to release the RFP. The RFP was released today and you have in front of you the contract from LS3P for the next phase of architectural design.
So we're saying ninety-one, a hundred and one thousand dollars?
That's the fee for this part of the contract for the design and the bids, documents and everything that goes with getting the design going.
So we spent thirty and now we want another hundred. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
We spent seventy-three and now we want another hundred thousand dollars to put towards this.
We've only spent fifty, I think it's fifty, fifty-two, is that right? Nineteen-two is part of, the first part that wasn't spent will be only taken off this part of this contract.
Now how many? How many square feet is this we're giving up?
This is, this is the basically, we're going to look at the one, one point five to design, one point five million project cost.
Well, Mr. Chairman, we've just gotten this information. I, I think it's premature to ask for a decision to move forward when we haven't had a chance to look at it. This is my first seeing it. I haven't had an opportunity to determine whether or not it's reasonable or what. I would not be in favor of moving forward on voting to pay this to LS3P at this time.
Not when we already spent seventy, committed seventy and we want this on top. Now you just saw the presentation that I told you about the square footage. You saw the email from the gentleman. Do you think this makes sense, ladies and gentlemen? There's no way in the world that it makes sense.
Chad, you got anything?
Well, I'll, my intent is the same as it was at the last meeting. I want us to move forward. These two gentlemen, I respect their comments about seeing this for the first time.
Okay.
And, and I will honor that. Not, not that I'm drawing back from moving forward on the project, though.
Kenny?
As I've said in the past, and I'll say it again, I guess I'm the one that opened this can of worms. I started when Toby came on as our county manager. I asked him, I said, you know, I feel like we need a new library. If you see a chance, where are some monies available or grants? And I was hoping for some grants, free grants. But we all know that's sort of a thing of the past right now. I want a new library. No ifs, ands, or buts about it. I want a new library. And I've said that from the beginning and I will continue to say that. We, we have a nice, brand-new gym at the high school. Some of us have probably never been in it. They don't need a gym. They don't have children. They, they don't go out to the ballgames. We have boat landings down here at the river at two different locations. I own three boats, so I need a boat landing. But I'm sure there's a lot of people in here that don't need a boat landing. But the state provides it for us. And we can probably name several other things all around that is provided to the citizens of the county. And I'm going to say probably a lot of people in here don't use those services one way or the other. But for the people that use the library, we need a library. And I, and I feel passionate about that. And you talk about repair the one we got. That, that was an option. That has been an option. We looked at, I think it was Golden Leaf Foundation to see if we could borrow some money or if they would give us a grant money and they wouldn't even talk to us about it because they said the building was too far gone to invest that money in it. So this, this is one of the. Ma'am, will you let me finish talking, please? So, so we have, we have, you know, we have looked at many things in this and we've talked about many things. Uh, how to go about this. When we've had a committee, Earl brought up about a committee, we've had a committee. And we've had commissioners on it, county manager on it, people from the library and public citizens that go to the library also to look at this. So this is not something that we're just jumping into. But yes, I, I, this is the first time I've seen this right now. And I don't have a problem with waiting till a later date to approve or not approve it, so.
Okay, you want to make that as a motion or?
Why?
Wait, wait till first of October meeting to act on this?
Henry had.
Yeah, I would.
Henry had something I'd like.
You know, I would make a motion that we tabled this proposal till the October first meeting in order to make a decision on moving forward with the presented costs.
Okay, we've got a motion to table this contract until the October first meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, like sign. All right, we'll table this first October and make a decision on it.
Uh, one comment. I'd like for each of you to take the opportunity, go out to New Hope and you take a look at what you can buy for that. You come back and you tell me that you think it's not first class. Then you take this money here and you make the multiplication. And you tell me how you, what you would buy. Please take the time to do that. Mr. Dickens.
I heard somebody asked a question before about this square footage. I never heard an answer, but what, what are you, what are you less nice to something LS3P or whatever you?
This, uh.
Square footage or you don't like whatever they?
The square footage was still at eight thou, well, eight thousand square footage, but they're going, they're going, this is a bidding, the contract, the design and bid to stay within the one point five million that we reduced it to last, at the last meeting.
So we're getting the same.
Starting at once. Excuse me, sir?
Go ahead, finish, Graham. I got a comment.
Okay, I'm sure. Um, but after we get to that point, we will, the, the bid, after the bidding process, they're going to bring, try to bring the cost down to where we want it to be at before we can go any farther. And I sure hope that the contractor that's done the church will bid on the project when we get that far. If he can build it that cheap, we ought to build this library for a million dollars, not a problem. If he can bid on the, on the project and do it as cheap as he says he can do it.
But he, Graham, he is a design-build company. Why should we waste this money when he is included in his price?
We, we're at that point right now. We've already moved past that point, Connie, right now. We'll, we'll, we'll talk about this in the next meeting.
I think we can terminate at any time the way I read the contract.
All right, you make that motion in the next, uh, next meeting if you want to terminate the contract.
I, Graham, I would like for you to go look. Take a look.
Okay, let's move on. We're in our new business now. We've got a reappointment for Mr. Abram Saunders through the EIC Board. Uh, anybody have any questions on that? Uh, Mr. Abram Saunders has been, been on this board for approximately, what, twenty years? Twenty-five years and he's agreed to re, to serve on it again. Uh, he was sent a application that we had determined. He hadn't sent that back yet.
Mr. Chairman, you need a motion?
Yes, sir, I would like to have a motion to reappoint Abram Saunders.
Mr. Chairman to approve Mr. Abram Saunders's.
I second.
Committee.
I've got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. All right, the next, we've got a resolution for the CDGB contingency capacity fund grant that we have been receiving. We need to determine the signing officials for any money that will be removed from the grant. So you want to go over that, Toby?
What you have in front of you is the resolution for the capacity build and grant that we spoke about at the last meeting. This resolution will give the signatories the authority to sign the documents for CDBG.
Uh, what we're going, it will, it will give, let's see, what are the names listed? Uh, the county manager, the finance officer, the chairman of the board and Commissioner Jack Owens will be one of the four that will be signing for the fund, two of the four, right?
Correct.
Two of these four people will be approved to sign for the funds on this grant.
How is this determined? How is this determined?
It's, well, we had the CDGB grants before. We just used, used the names, the same ones. Carlton was the, was determined because he was in town and we needed somebody in town. So he volunteered to do it and we've asked that because he was right in, in Gatesville, too. The finance officer and county manager will be, the money will be dispersed through their offices. I will need a motion to approve this resolution.
One more question.
Okay.
County manager, will this be required each time we do a draw? Or will this basically request the funds to be released? Now, I said, do we have to draw it like monthly or whenever we have the expenditure?
If I understood your question right, this resolution will not be done each time there's a draw. This will be the authority for the, two of these four people to sign the paperwork to get the draw.
To, to have it released, not each time that we
Correct.
Submit for funds.
Correct. It will, this will give two of the four the authority to send in the requisition and signing the CDBG paperwork that's required to draw them.
And we have four people so that we can, at any point in time, if somebody's out of the, of county, we can have at least two people available to sign them. All right, we'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution to authorize the designated people to sign for requisition of the CDBG funds.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. All right, Toby, you've got one more thing for surplus vehicle?
Yeah, I actually think I have two more things. Uh, the one in front of you is the request for surplus disposition of assets. This is a sheriff's car that has been replaced and needs to be put on gov deals to be sold.
What is, okay, this is Chevy and Powell.
Yes, it's a Chevy and Powell.
How long has that used this car, you know?
I'm, I'm not sure if it's this year's or last year's, but.
Billy, Billy, how long has it been since y'all have used this car? Do two thousand and five in Powell? Yeah, okay. Okay. All right, we have a motion to allow the sheriff's office to put this on up for auction.
Salute.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. All right, uh.
I have one last thing. The last thing for me, in front of you, should have a resolution of designation of applicant's agent. This is for the FEMA for Hurricane Irene, part of the paperwork. Two individuals have to be designated to be the point of contact and the individuals that would represent the county. They recommend that it not be an elected official or someone who, they recommend it be someone who has intimate knowledge of the requisitions and other paperwork. I recommend that you should appoint Billy Winn and Sandy Pittman as those two people.
Any questions, gentlemen?
Who recommends that?
I do. The, the names or the individ, or they want someone intimately involved.
What does the guidelines allow? I mean, it's basically, does it say commissioner or does it say?
No, it, it doesn't say commissioner and, and in the meetings we've had with FEMA, they recommend that it not be someone who's in a higher level appointed position. They want someone who's actually involved in, in deals with this stuff.
And that would be?
Billy and Sandy.
All right, we'll.
I make a motion that we appoint Billy Winn to this designated as the FEMA liaison, liaison sign.
All right, we've got a motion to appoint Billy and Sandy Pittman as the designated FEMA.
Did he say Billy Winn or?
Did you say Billy and Sandy?
Billy, Billy.
Billy and or Sandy or Billy?
Well, if we need two, you can put that name on there, too. That's fine.
Okay, we'll make the motion.
All right, Billy and Sandy as designated signers.
Okay, we've got a motion to appoint Billy and Sandy as the designated FEMA for the resolution.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
Let's all have it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right, and next on our agenda, we're going to move into a citizen's comment. I would remind y'all, I'd like to, everybody that speaks would like to speak. I like to keep it as, as reasonable as possible. I'll give you all the time you need. There's a lot of people may want to speak. So let's take your time, take your time that you need, but try to keep it short. And if it gets out of hand, I've asked Billy Spruill to be here and he will remove you right out of the courtroom. Uh, we're going to take this by hands. Uh, Earl's got his first hand up first. I'm going to let him speak first. Uh, J E, I'm going to get you next. I forgot your name's on the list, but you'll go next.
I've been up here one time. My name is Earl Ranstry. I want to, you know, I, for, for full disclosure, I've talked to all these commissioners more than one time about this library project and Mr. Hor and I have talked about it a great deal and so I've talked with some of the others. Uh, for, and I really enjoyed Mr. Hor's presentation and I'm sure that y'all did. It's kind of long and confusing and he's a numbrous man and most of us are pie chart men, so. But there's one thing that we have not addressed. I brought this up and Kenny mentioned about my committee, Kenny. Uh, but we have never really addressed this. Mr. Hor's presentation was based totally on the number of people that use the library. Well, most of the time when people go to the library, they go in and one or two, it's not like at twelve o'clock lunchtime when everybody's lined up, right, Pat? And so, but the library, what is a library? The library is a place for books, information, computers. And my question was before, and my question is tonight, is to determine not how many people use the library, but how much space do we need to put this information in that, that would be pleasing to go into? Someone asked a question back here, uh, well, what's wrong with the old building? Well, first of all, I've got a MRI tomorrow and I had claustrophobia and panic attacks last time because I don't like closed spaces. And when I go to, go to see Pat, I sort of get claustrophobia in there. So we know we need something bigger. And I don't know whether eight thou, this is what I brought up before. I don't know whether eight thousand feet is enough, too much. I don't know whether four thousand. But I'm still going to go right back to what I said. Let us determine really what size we really need. Because it's really, as much as I enjoyed your presentation and it is about books and where we're going to put the information. And so if we don't decide that, then we haven't really decided anything. And I want to comment on Mr. Jernikin's comment about the various things like the gym, boat ramps, and my son and I, we've got three boats, too. What kind of fool has three boats? I don't know. Me and you. We talk about that, too, don't we? But, uh, But, you know, nothing has been brought up when we built the social services building, or how many people in Gates County. I guess it's a subject that nobody don't want to talk about. But percentage of the number of people and the residents in this, in Gates County that actually go to use the social services building is probably lower than it is for the library. And nobody don't want to believe that. But I pay my taxes to build that overpriced building down there. I pay my taxes to build that expensive, nice gym that we got. And I will pay my part of the taxes to build a library as long as I think it's built the proper way, it's cheap, but good. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
I'm going to go get an MRI.
Okay.
Thank you, Eric.
Mr., let me get Jay. Jay, you, you signed up, you go now. Welcome, Jay.
Thank you. Just a tweak in what I was going to say, commissioners and fellow citizens of Gates County. The motion that was made just a few moments ago, a few minutes ago, to table the, the vote, I would suggest that that vote will be taken at the next day meeting. And I would, if I were a betting man, it will be passed. I would suggest that the only reason it was tabled tonight was because of the attendance and the... The Democratic Party currently in power in Washington DC is proposing that emphasis be placed on rebuilding the country's infrastructure. That is, the roads and bridges. They need rebuilding. That's their answer to the jump-starting the economy, providing jobs. What bothers me about that is that that action results in revenue drawn from taxpayers. Me, you, the citizens of this country. My concern is that the same may apply to the proposed and planned library. Given the current economic conditions, I would ask, what is the plan to pay for the library? No one's, no one's come forth with that. And I'll speak to that again in just a moment. I would like to see the commissioners put forth a plan to the citizens, how will it be paid for? I'm talking about tax rates in detail. Some months ago, even before the LP3 phase of the project was approved by the commissioners, I asked you, the commissioners, has any thought been given to the hidden cost? For example, additional county employees to staff the library? There was but one answer. One commissioner came forth with a response, and that response was, I hope it does increase county employee jobs. I questioned that response. For those new salaries also would be paid from taxpayers' based revenues. That is, you and I. I opened this, opened just a moment ago with, mentioned the Democratic Party. I want to make clear that it's not just the Democrats, it's Republicans and Democrats alike. Ronald Reagan, Republican, or in the 80s, during his first run for the presidency, stated, "Don't let anyone tell you that the budget can't be balanced. I did it for the state of California and I'll do it for this country." Well, he left office eight years later after two terms and the deficit had tripled. So it's, it's alike, Democrats and Republicans alike. If Democrats and Republicans alike are against deficits, then why do they exist? My concern is, I don't want to see that condition come to our county as a taxpayer. I find it particularly interesting that less than 600 people, that is senators, congressmen, one president, and nine Supreme Court justices, out of 3 million people, are largely responsible for the domestic problems that plague our country. And likewise, I find it equally interesting that a panel of five commissioners and one county manager can dictate the actions of over 12,000 people. I request that you, our commissioners, be ever mindful for the need to continually seek opportunities and way to not only keep citizens in the loop of, in the loop, but for us to take part in the decision-making process. And that, when, when I say that, I mean before decisions are made, not after the fact. It's essential, I feel it's essential, especially when it involves actions that will at some point increase our taxes. Thank you.
Thank you, J E. Alright, Dan? Oh, Dan, wait, Miss Sandra was before you, let me ask her first, if you don't mind. Miss Sandra was before you, let me get you first. Okay.
My name is Dan Baymore and I'm from the Hall Township, and most of you know me. And most of you know that I have been coming to these meetings for a number of years. Before any of these people ever got elected to office. And I'm still coming to the meeting. I give my opinion then, and many things that I gave my opinion on were documented and put in and implemented for the people of Gates County, more so with the planning committee. And then, as time progressed, I was at a meeting that the commissioners then mentioned to the fact about a new library. And the phrase that was used at that time was, "We found some money." And I questioned that phrase because to me, "found money" means that you, you've got it in your possession. And then it turned around and is, "We found some money we can borrow." So that's the way it stands as I stand before you. Then we went through several trials and tribulations, conversations, some of which I was hammered to make it sit down because I talked too long. And then I was, had some people make some squinty faces at me from these people because they didn't agree with what I was saying. And I commend you to be yourself, and if you want to make a face at me, then so be it. But I'm going to tell you, I am not here tonight to start a riot. I am here to ask a few questions. Why was this information not furnished to the people a year ago? Why did it wait for us to progress to this level?
Mr. Baymore.
For you to say, yes, spend money, excuse me a minute, for yes, you spend money. Your money, our money. Something has happened that has failed the people by not informing us before then. Mr. Horr, you may speak now.
Thank you, Dan.
Dan, you know that the night that this was first brought up on the table, the first question I asked is how much this was going to cost? And you and I had a discussion.
Yes, we did.
And you said, I think this is a time for a referendum. And I agreed. I put that idea on the table. It is up to the people. I, I truly believe that. And that's what I'm sticking by. And it is, and it is a very sensitive thing. We all want the right things, but they are the right way to do it. And I don't feel that responsibility sitting behind this desk not to talk to you. The gentleman said I ought to know what the people want. Well, I've been listening. I've, I've been listening. And I've been figuring. I do my homework. I did it when I worked, when I was the controller of the International Paper. All the time. It's what was expected of me. I listen to other people, but I don't just take what they say for granted. I go do my own analysis and see how it lines up with mine. And that's what we need to do. We didn't do that. We did not do that. That is what aggravated, and I told, I said that about last July, to do this very thing. We didn't do it. And so here we are today, bickering, and we need to be on with the process. Five people have said that we want a library, that we need to do something, and that, and that's true. I mean, that's, it's true. But Lord knows, it's easy to spend somebody else's money. I don't go around throwing mine around, I can tell you that. Never have, never will. When I die, I hope I'll have some money left. I'm not trying to spend it all, and I'm not trying to keep up with everybody either. But I like nice things. And I showed you tonight that we could have nice things. We don't have to pay this. This right here is ridiculous. This is absolutely ridiculous.
Johnny, can we get back to our comments from citizens? You can, we'll have another one afterwards. Thank you, Dan. Go ahead with yours if you don't mind.
I thank you for your, your comment, Commissioner Horr. And I also would like feedback from some of the rest of you. You're holding back on us. And when I say you're holding back on us, number one, we have not talked about the percentages that Mr. Horr spoke about, of how it's going to affect our pocketbooks. And then you haven't asked us how deep our pockets was. Because some of them are very shallow, others are deeper than others. But I'm here to tell you, I'm willing to pay my part. I even offered to pay you guys a check of 600 and some dollars on the day that you made a comment about building this library because I think we need a library. And at that time, it was going to figure out 600 and some dollars per taxpayer. I said, well, let me write a check so I don't have to pay interest for 30 years. Get it over with. Alright, this is 900 and some thousand dollar library we're talking about. Now, this is road. There was even a comment where I made a comment to you about a suggestion on how you could build a library for a million dollars or less and not have to go to the state to get approval. And of course, that wasn't paid no attention to either. So I am one person. I don't expect you to do as one person asked you to do. I expect you to give the majority of the people the chance to voice their opinion and listen to them. And don't go there and force this on us, even though you've got as far as it's get right now. It is not too late to make adjustments. If the people say they want an 800, an 8,000 square foot library, give it to them. If they say they want a 1.7 million dollars, which you can turn in almost free. And I can spell that out for you if you like, because if you go by your interest rates for 30 years and that this 1.5 something does not include everything that's necessary for the library to include furnishings and whatever changes that you want to make as far as the roof changes, the brick, or whatever. That is the base price. Is my interpretation. I have a copy of that, and I thank you for the furnishing it to me. And so therefore, if the people want a 7,000 square foot library, give it to them. If they want a 10,000 square foot library, give it to them. Let them give you feedback. It is their money that is paying for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Miss Sandra?
Okay, Mr. Chairman and other commissioners, glad to see you tonight, haven't been here in a long time.
You're welcome, yeah.
I really would like for you as a board, just like anything else, to work together better and be in one accord. We all have different opinions. That's life and that's our prerogative, you know? But as my husband says, sometimes I don't listen to him. But it would be nice if you listened to the people of the county, since they may very well write your check, I think. I love you all.
Thank you. Right here? Yes, ma'am?
I just want to start by saying I wasn't planning on coming up here.
Your name, your name?
My name is Megan Mauer, I live in Gates. I wasn't planning on coming up here, this is my first meeting. I have two little ones, so it's hard for me to leave them to come out to these things. And I'm, I'm just one voice out of many who have a different opinion on the library. I am a card-holding member. I go to the library, I haven't been in a long time, because again, it's hard to get out when you have little ones. But in this day and age, I have an iPad now. I get eBooks. It is more convenient, it's more environmentally friendly, which is something that we all need to look at, too. So to me, a library is kind of a dated resource. Again, I, I love libraries. It was one of the first things I did when I moved here, was I went and got my library card, got one for my son. But the need is not there. I do think that we do need a new building. I heard that there's bats in that building, which creeps me out. So I do, I do think we need a new building. But at 1.5 million dollars, I don't think that's logical. Now, Mr. Jernigan, is it?
Right.
I love that you have three boats. That's great for you. To you, the six or seven cent change in your taxes isn't going to mean squat. I have two kids, one of which is disabled. To me, that six or seven cents is a lot. I pay over $450 a month for my daughter's therapy. Again, to you, that may not seem like a lot, but we're a single-income family. My husband works and goes to school to support his family. That money is better spent on my daughter's rehabilitation than it is on a library that is not going to get the use. So I'm not trying to say that we don't need a library, I think that we do need a new building. I really do. But we need to look at all the different aspects of it. And again, like Mr. Horr said, if there's other companies out there that are willing to do a good job at a fraction of the cost, why wasn't that brought to the table to begin with? Why wasn't the research done in the beginning? And you're saying, you know, it's not too late for him to place a bid. Then why were you asking to move forward with this bid if there's still an opportunity for another man to place a bid? We should reopen the bidding, look at all of our different avenues, and then move forward with the most cost-effective...
Just to explain to you, bids haven't been, there's no bidding's been done, there's none been put out yet. This is to get to the point where we can actually get to have bids.
But you've narrowed it down to this one company, correct?
This is just a design company, nothing to do with building.
Okay, well then, why don't we...
They will, they will bid out the job for the buildings.
But like Mr. Horr said, this is a design and a build company.
Right.
Why weren't they considered for the design?
They, it was put out to, to several companies, there was 20, 20, 30 companies that, that actually applied to design. Evidently, they didn't.
But now that you've got this information...
We may, we may talk to them, I'm not, we're not, we're not...
But I think, I think as a majority, the community would like you to talk to them. That's going to save us a lot of money. And that is a beautiful building, it really is. So again, like I said, I'm horrible at public speaking. I'm nervous, I'm sweating, I'm shaking, but I just wanted my voice to be heard, that not all of us can afford three boats. Not all of us can afford to just say, oh, it's just this amount, it's just that amount. I budget every single thing. When I go to the grocery store, I know how much money I can spend. You may not have those problems, but a lot of people in this community do. So when we're talking about our taxes going up, that's a red flag. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, we have anybody else? Yes, sir, would you come up? Dan? Yeah, we need you up here at the mic.
Hey, Dan, how you doing? Hey, Dan, how you doing?
Doing good, good good. I wanted to speak to you about the library there. Correct me.
The, the, give, give your name and address if you don't mind.
Dan Etheridge, Hopsville, North Carolina. Those that don't know him, y'all get to know him. The courthouse over here, when was it built exactly?
Eighteen thirty-six.
Eighteen thirty-six.
Eighteen thirty-six. I was born in Pasquotank County, raised in Chauan County. And long before Gates County was ever named after Horatio Gates, it was known as the Chauan District. When Virginia decided, no pun intended, nobody takes me wrong, nothing against Virginia, modify people. But they decided to move to line, state line. Carolina's response was to name the Chauan District. They named it after Horatio Gates. But it was part Chauan County for many, many years. And for those of you that don't know, Chauan County had been the smallest county in the state of North Carolina and was the governed, first governed capital of the state of North Carolina. Prior to it was called Queen Anne's Town. Named later after Governor Charles Eden after his death many years later. And what I was going to tell you was, right over there, my mother's people have been in Chauan County for almost 300 years. Chauan County Courthouse is the oldest courthouse in the nation that is still in use. The public library they had for many, many years, they had it housed in a building that was built before Chauan County was ever named Chauan County, before, well, actually, I'll back up on that. Actually, before Gates County was ever named, Gates County. And it was housed in a house that was built in 1758. The house was in disrepair. It was built by Lynn Surveyor, by James Corbin, appointed by the Duke of Albemarle, by the Queen originally. The house was built in 1758 and the house changed hands. The descendants of James Corbin was Nestle Bond, Bonds, were too disposed to witness. They started stripping out the interior and selling it off to the, like, the museums up north and things like that. It's known as a Queen Anne-style home. Well, the reason that home is there today, and it's one of North Carolina's architectural gems. And the reason it's there today is because for years it was used as a library. The upstairs floor housed the library before they ever had the library that's there today. And if this building can have anything done to it to preserve it and save it, I think it really deserves to be saved. And if it houses the library for the generations to come, why not? Why not? Because really, by its own right, I'm sure that if y'all got to digging around, there is some history there. Wonderful history that needs to be saved and passed on. And I think if you keep them together, I think it'll have a future. And maybe some of the younger generations will learn more about the history of Gates County and learn to embrace it and appreciate it in years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Appreciate your opinion. Okay, do we have anybody else who'd like to speak? Yes, sir.
Lex, good evening.
Good evening. How are you tonight?
Good. I'm William Smith from Porton, Virginia. I air Martha Hunter in the Hunter Mills Township. And my question is, is not about the library. My, my question is that I've got a tax bill. We own six acres. And it says one acre, $24,000. Five acres, $10,600. And I need to get an answer about the difference.
Have you talked to our tax office? Henry, you want, you, you're up on that a little bit more, can you?
Well, the, what Gates County has done is one acre is considered a building site. One acre, and that has the higher tax assessment. Twenty-four thousand is probably fair. Some of the upper one-acre sites is $40,000 and upward. The other five acres is considered a non-building site. It's, it could be just cleared land or wooded land or whatever. And that's taxed at a lower rate. So that's why that five acres is 10,000. And that one acre is considered a building site, which is probably on the road front at 24,500.
When you said considered, that means if a building that would be put there, we'll always pay taxes on?
One building site. Every, all, all properties, all farms have one building site figured on it.
I've got another one in the Hunter's Mill for 6.5 acres. And it only valued 13,562.
Is that got a road fronting and, or was it all woodlands?
Same as this. This says it has a house on it.
Has a house on it?
Has a home.
Sounds like a good question for the tax office. I really do.
I've been, I've been there.
What, what did they say? I wish she was here now. She's on, she's on the left most of the.
But I've been there. I came Monday of last week. And I talked to them and stayed there and they gave me some good reasoning. But when I look at it, you know, I don't mind paying the taxes and it's aired, as long as it, it's fair and everybody's doing the same thing. But here, I, I didn't understand and I thought I needed to come to the committee where I could get some understanding why one acre, and I understand that one acre for?
One, one acre is considered a building lot now. On the six, now, if it's all one parcel on, under one group, it still would be one acre. If it's owned by the same, I think it's right. If, if, if you've got two pieces of land that aren't connected, but they're really one parcel owned by the same, you have one building site.
The other piece of land belonged to somebody else.
Oh, really?
Yes, sir. And one of us getting paid, wouldn't get charged 34,000, I don't want to get charged.
30,000 and I just know because it's aired and I just explain it's only 30,000.
The mic, oh, okay. Um, all I can do is, if you'll get with one of us after the meeting, can you hang around? We'll, uh?
To, to, will you?
If you give her your phone number?
We'll make sure somebody tomorrow, we'll get some answers for it tomorrow.
I'll make sure the tax administrator calls you in the morning.
Make sure we understand that. And if, and we want to make sure if you're not satisfied with, I'll contact, so we can get to the Board of Adjustment for the next, next tax season and be in there. You okay, Chase? Okay. Okay, while we're waiting, is there anybody else who'd like to have a comment? Yes, ma'am.
The volume should be right about right right now, sir.
Thank you, Chase.
My name is Carolyn Riddick and I live in New York. Like her, I'm a little nervous, get shaky. I don't like speaking in big cries. But I just want to say, as a community, I feel like the community is being torn apart over a library. We as people and some as Christians need to learn that we need to respect one another, as well as some of those on the board toward others. And we need to pull together and work for what the good of the county is. I love Ms. Pat dearly. I can remember my oldest one is 23, my youngest is 17. They grew up in that library. And needless to say, like Mr. Horr said earlier, some of us haven't been in there in a long time and I'm one of them. It's a choice. It's not because I don't like going to the library. There's not times that I don't need to go to the library. It's just life is busy and I don't have all the technology. I don't approve of all this fancy technology we have because it takes away from the, the simple life of a library. I love being able to go check out a book when I feel the need to or I want to. My problem is, in this county, I have a son, 17 years old, this summer. FAA project. He could not get a job with a farmer this summer. We're sitting here and needless to say, we need a library because I can remember when my kids were little and we'd go for summer programs there and we'd be in that damp basement. So we need one. But it's like John said, we got to decide the square footage and how much the county is willing to put out for that library. We need to be concerned about jobs here. We've got a lot of kids in this county. Can't even get a summer job. I can remember when I was growing up, I could at least kind of put in tobacco, chopping peanuts. That brought my summer clothes. For school. My son couldn't do that this year. If he wanted a job, I'd had to haul him out of the county. And it's wrong. We need revenue in this county. And if we don't get the revenue here, we're going to lose our youth. All these houses that I see are foreclosed or up for sale. It's because we have no job opportunities here. We have nothing here to offer our youth here. And if we lose everybody, the library is going to have nobody to go there. We need to keep people here to go visit Ms. Pat, to go visit this new library. No matter what, how much we spending, or if it's the Taj Mahal, as I keep hearing people in the county say. That's the problem. We have too many people limping off about things they don't know about instead of working and pulling together for the better of the county. I want my sons, my, my, both of my boys dream of staying in the county. And I'm going to be honest, I said, "For what? There's nothing here." Yes, we've got to think outside the box. I love the older people. I love to go visit. I love to listen to the stories they tell. But when they are dead and gone, where's the future at if we don't start putting into these youth here? And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Okay, anybody next? Yes, sir. Give us your name.
Yes, Jim Miller. I'm a resident here in Gatesville. And I'd just like to ask, I don't use a library, but I do agree that we do need one. But this obviously is a touchy subject for the citizens here in this county. And what's happened in the past is in the past now. So I simply ask that if you could please just stop going forward with anything right now and maybe consider how we feel on this one particular subject. And maybe research a little bit more on how we feel and what might be the best way to spend our money. As Commissioner Horr said, it is easy to spend somebody else's money. And it's easy to make a quick decision when it's not coming out of your pocket. So I just stand here in front of you today and consider all of us, all of the tax-paying citizens in this county, before you spend any more of our money.
Thank you, Jim. All right, does anybody else would like to have a moment? If not, we're going to move forward. All right, next on the agenda, we'll be going to our commissioner comments. Johnny, you have anything you'd like to say?
Well, I've said a lot, but anyhow. I am going to tell you, I do feel compassion for all of those people that would like to have a library. But I am also a taxpayer of Gates County. I'm a financial person and I have always, always been challenged by the fact of spending your money wisely. And honestly, I sit here today and it, and I feel compassion for Kenny and some of these others that want this too. Ladies and gentlemen, we did not do our homework. We did not. To me, here's $100,000 right here. I'd rather have that in square footage. I know how to get there. I presented something to you tonight and I, like I said, I'd like for you to go out there and take a look. Just go look. We don't have to spend this $100,000. This is ridiculous. Absolutely ridiculous. We done spent 70 and committed 70 and now we want another 100, the way I'm reading it. You know, I'm smart enough to do research myself to figure out some of these things and, and ask a guy like this person that did this, "Hey, this is what I want." And he's got it included in the price. Why do I need somebody to do? I don't need anybody from Raleigh to tell me that. Do you know how many talented people we have in Gates County? Do you think there's any talent here? Do you? I do. I know several people in this county right now. I mean, they're, uh, they're very smart. And if they don't know something, they know who to ask, that it don't cost 100 grand or 70 grand. We don't need that. This is about leadership. Poor leadership. And I'm going to tell you, there's some other things on the table like this. When I was out there in this community, going around campaigning, I listened to what people had to say. And I listened. And I'm doing exactly what I heard. I am protecting you, the citizen of Gates County, the taxpaying citizen. And as I told you, I'm not focused on any small group. That's not my cup of tea. The only way we're going to win is to win together, just like the young lady just said. It takes teamwork. Now, we can have our disagreements. And believe me, I'm going to voice my opinion. But 20% of the people won't dictate to me what I do. They will not. And I will not spend your money unwisely. I promise you. I'm only one vote, 20%. Takes three to win or move forward. But John Horr will not move forward unless I'm 100% satisfied that you, the citizens of Gates County, are being protected and you're getting what you want. That's all of you, not just a few of you. It's important to me. I take pride in myself of carrying the ball for the team. I want to win. I don't like to lose. And we can win. But I've showed you a path that we can all win, an economical path. All we got to do is take the ball and be willing to move it forward. And I, I ask you, the citizens, to challenge these guys up here. Let's do that. We can go. Let's win. Let's win together. And I do appreciate each and every one of you coming out tonight, those that are foreign or have questions. It's important that you do this. Take interest in your government. And as Mr. Horr just said, hey, this is happening all over this country. Everybody talks about Republicans and Democrats, but I'm going to tell you, this is the way it is. And I made this comment one time before. It's this. The government is over there. The people are over here. And you know where the Republicans and Democrat are? They're over there. They're on the right side. That's the way that bar, and when you vote Republican or Democrat, the bar, the bar slants on, but it don't move on the vertical plane. It's time that the people's voice gets heard and do the right thing. So when you go to the polls and you vote for people, don't look at whether they're Republican or Democrat. That mean absolutely nothing. Look at their conscience, their track record. See how they protect you, the citizen. As Mr. Horr just said, there's about less than 600 people in this country are dictating what happens to you. Now, you get the opportunity to go vote for them, so don't just take it for granted. Do your research about the person that you elected. Looking at their background. Look at the, the track record. I mean, it's important. It's more important today than it ever was. I can tell you that, very much so. You want people that move the ball forward, to win, not to lose. This is the greatest current country on the face of the earth. And we've let it slide because we let our manufacturing process go overseas. And I'm, I tell you, I know what I'm talking about, because that happened to my company. So I challenge you. Look at your politicians. Look at their track record. Look at their background. And when you go to the vote, polls to vote, look at each one of those names. Don't even look at the side, what party they own. That, that's absolutely nothing. You're making a big mistake if you don't look at the people. But again, I appreciate each and every one of you being here tonight. And please come back.
Jack?
Johnny, you and several of the people are correct. This is a sensitive topic. Johnny would tell you, if you ask him, and I encourage you to ask him, after this meeting, it's, it's real common, after a commissioner's meeting, within the next day, sometimes the same day, or two days later, Johnny will come out of my office and we'll talk in detail about things that are discussed here. He'll, he'll tell you that's true. He'll also tell you that he called me about New Hope Baptist Church, and he said, "I wonder who built that?" And I said, "I don't know, Johnny, but I'll find out." And I did. And I called Johnny with the information, so he could contact them. Johnny came to me and said, "We have good builders." I said, "No, Johnny, in the county." I said, "No, Johnny, we have great builders in the county. We have the best builders of anybody around." And I said, "I will support local contractors building our county buildings, including the library. If they want to bid and they have good building rates," I said, "Johnny, I will support you in that." My vision for Gates County is not tomorrow, it's way down the road. Nobody loves Gates County any more than Jack Owens. If you do, you might love Gates County equally. I love Gates County, and I want to make Gates County better. I, I want to raise the bar for Gates County. I want us to, to be noticed for what we produce. And I'm not talking about the proverbial Taj Mahal. You know, we, we have, we hear a lot of, a lot of comments in this, in these chambers. And I want you to remember that we, we hear a lot of negative comments, and, and there's a reason for that. You know, you're speaking, you think that you have this, the short window of opportunity, and you're doing the right thing by coming out and sharing, and you're passionate about the way you feel. And, and it comes, it comes through loud and clear. There, there are a lot of people out there that are not approaching Johnny because they, they see his view. There are people out there that are speaking to the other commissioners, and they're speaking to the ones that are more, maybe more in favor of the library, because we're more easy to approach. I mean, that makes sense. That makes sense. So you don't, you don't realize the number of people that are coming to us, calling us, and saying that they're glad that we are moving forward on the library. The location and condition of the library, I believe, has a lot to do with the usage. You know, it would be interesting to know, you know, I'm, I'm not talking about whether you have a library card or not, but knowing that this meeting was coming up, I paid probably my fifth visit to the library, not to use the library, but to go in and just take a new, fresh look at the condition of that library. And I, I want to, I want you to, to also remember that a hundred percent of the people up here say that we need a library. And probably nine out of ten folks who came to that podium said, "I believe we need a library." You really did. If you, if you look back at the video, it was probably, it was probably a real large number that said that we need a library. Our differences are how we go about it. So we're listening to you. I hope you appreciate that we did, um, not vote tonight to go through with the, uh, with the rest of the contract at this time. And we'll, we'll listen. We'll listen to what we've heard. But there are twelve thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven residences in Gates County, and I believe that Gates County deserves the best. And, uh, and I, again, thank you for, for coming. And to the, to the lady who is new here in the county, I appreciate your comments. And to Ms. Riddick, Carolyn, we are working on bringing these businesses that you're talking about that Gates County needs. You know, we're not hearing a lot about that in here, because, you know, the library's taking up all the oxygen in the room. But we are working on those types of things. Thank you.
Henry?
First of all, I do want to thank everyone for coming. We've heard a lot of honest, heartfelt discussions tonight and comments, and I don't take them lightly. As a matter of fact, I'm sitting here tonight as a commissioner, because I did not agree with many of the decisions that were being made for our county. One of the things I had a lot of heartburn about was the zoning ordinance. And many times, you have to get involved with politics in order to make changes. And I made that decision to get involved. And as we look at the major subjects tonight of a library, I can't help from, uh, feeling what's been said, uh, because when you spend money, you've got to make sure that you're getting the best for your dollar. You'd like to have, many of us would like to have a six thousand square foot home, but sometimes we have to settle for a twenty-five hundred, uh, if you want to have something left over. And I say this, I say that to say that I believe the next move we should make, uh, as a board, and I'll vocalize this more in the next meeting, is that we should send out a robocall to the county citizens. We can robocall you anytime for emergencies, and let you know that we want you to participate in a survey of whether or not you want to build a one point five million dollar library. Now, if you say you want to build that, I'm all for it. But if you say no, I think we need to make the best economic decision for building, for moving forward in the library that we can make. And whether that's building a one million dollar, whether that's renovating the old courthouse, whether that's, uh, utilizing family food, we don't know yet. But I think we owe it to you to socialize among ourselves how we can get your input, and certainly consider it before we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Henry. Jimmy?
I'd certainly like to thank everybody that came tonight and has spent this lovely time with us. There's, you know, the, the library, like I say, I'm the one that, uh, you might say, just opened the can of worms and started, "Let's look at the library." I still think that was the right move to make. We definitely need a library. In the last meeting, I, you know, they kept talking about the, the price was going up, the price is going up. I said, "Let's cap it at, at one point five." That didn't mean that we had to spend one point five. Hopefully, these contractors or whoever, you know, bids on this, and hopefully, this one that did the new, uh, the church up there, you know, hopefully, he can come in and he can still bid on parts of it or all of it, whatever. And, and maybe we can get it for the million or, or, or less than a million and a half. So, so that's where, where I stand on that. And to the lady about my boats, I have a little fourteen foot flyboard boat is one of them. It was nineteen fifty-one. It's nineteen fifty-one. They, they are not new boats. They're not new boats. Oh, I, I know. Oh, I know, I know. Well, the, the first boat I got, I'd give a whole dollar for it. Oh, I know, I know that. I know that. I know that, and I'm aware of that. Thank you.
Eddie? Well, I'd like to thank all y'all for being here tonight. I'm not going to even discuss the library myself. I think my opinion for the library is already known. I feel like we need one. So, I mean, if we build one, we don't build one, we build one we want, we build one we need. If we, if we feel like we don't need one, we don't build one. If we don't, if we feel like we need jobs, we don't go out and get them, or we go out and get them. We try every day to do something like that. We, uh, we doing, we're having discussions with several different businesses. There's a starting point for everything. Jobs don't just automatically, automatically create themselves. There's a starting point. You have to discuss it with people. We've had several people that's come to the county, the first thing they want to know, "Do we have sewer?" No, they're gone. So we started working towards moving, moving in that direction. The project out in front of the, uh, schoolhouse there, we're looking at seventy to eighty jobs that will be created for somebody. I hope it's somebody's children or somebody that lives here, somebody sitting here tonight. There are jobs that will be created, because we're trying to do something in Gates County, to create jobs. Personally, I have a job, but I want other people to have jobs too. I want people to be in Gates County, because they want to be in Gates County. I'm here because I want to be. I could have left when I was nineteen years old too, but I didn't. I stayed in Gates County. I found a job. I worked outside a job. I come back to Gates County every night after thirty, forty mile, night drive. But I come back to Gates County because I wanted to be in Gates County. I'm a commissioner because I wanted to do something for Gates County. I felt, I felt the same thing that, uh, Henry said. I, I want sure that things were being done best, in the best interest for the county. But I didn't know what some of the things that commissioners had to deal with. Sure, uh, sure, when I see you sitting there, not knowing what you had to deal with as commissioner for all them years, I found out later, there are things that, some things I did not know that I have to deal with. The, the sad thing about it is, I may not get re-elected in, in the spring, and I know a lot of y'all will be happy. But I promise you one thing, I will be glad to know that I tried to do my best for, for Gates County while I was a commissioner. And I hope anybody comes in after me is lucky enough to be, be, be God and be able to satisfy everybody in Gates County, because I don't think it can happen. So y'all have a good night, and we appreciate you coming. Come back next year, uh, next weekend, we'll be here first of the month. Y'all have a good night. Uh, we need a motion adjourned.
Move.
We've got a motion adjourned, a second, all affairs are...
Aye.
All votes like that.